The time now is 12:05. I would like to officially start our meeting. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our first of two public hearings that will be held today. My name is Ayabami Bell Torrance and I am a marketing outreach coordinator for DDOT. Following today's presentation, you will have the opportunity to make your comments for public record. If time permits, we will also be able to address some comments relating to today's proposed changes. I would like to now turn it over to our executive manager of service development and scheduling, Mr. Steve Patronick.
Yes, good morning. This is a good afternoon. This is Steve Patronick. We're here to talk about our proposals for service changes to be effective on November 15th of this year. So these are proposals at this point. So we're here, we are here to take your comments. And the comment period will last for two weeks. So for those of you who have not been in a lot of Zoom meetings before, we have a few housekeeping items here. First of all, by participating in this meeting, you are granting permission for your name, image, likeness, and recordings to be used by DDOT. Mute, your mute is automatically set to on. So if you speak, you unmute yourself and then when you're done, please re-mute yourself. And there's a little hand cartoon where you can raise your hand to comment. And then if you're using the dial-in feature, some of the features of Zoom may not be available to you. So if you have the Zoom connection, that always works better. And if you do dial in, enter star nine to serve as the raise hand feature if you want to speak. Chat is that little box like in the cartoons where people talk to each other in the Sunday comics. So that's where you can submit your comments in the chat box to DDOT staff. Today's service challenge. Our bus service is scheduled to be frequent, convenient, and reliable, but we have not been able to meet that promise. Because we do not operate things exactly the way they are on the schedule. For those of you who waited for buses, you know that. So we are here to change that. DDOT is right sizing the service schedules for current ridership buses and operators. The result will be service that is reliable and comes when expected. So there will be fewer trips on the schedule, but you will be able to depend on the service to be there when you expect it to be there. For example, Raff 3 Grand River is scheduled for 15-minute service, but only 75% of the weekday service was operated in July. So when a trip is missing, it becomes a 30-minute interval. If two consecutive trips are missing, it can become a 45-minute interval or longer. So the solution to solve this problem, we are making near-term service changes to right-size the system. Even though buses may be scheduled to come less often, the actual service being provided on the street will be more consistent and reliable than it is today. So our solution that we're proposing today preserves access to destinations. We want to make sure the destination is currently serviced still within a half a mile of the bus route. Keep service hours by time of day. So we want to make sure that the people who travel especially for work trips and later trips, earlier trips, not everyone works eight to five. But we want to make sure you still have the span of hours that you had before, especially the first and last trips of the day. And so and as far as frequency goes, all routes will be scheduled to operate every 20 to 60 minutes. So we are proposing, these are the routes in this table are the ones we're proposing to change the weekday frequency. And you might notice that we're changing everything to 20s and 30s and and 60s. So these are all multiples of an hour. So that way the schedules will have the buses coming at roughly the same time every hour throughout the day. Now, if your route is not on this list, that means that whatever changes we made in 2020 for the emergency schedules will remain in effect. So that includes all the, all the service changes we made at the beginning of COVID, unless those routes are specifically mentioned in this presentation today. So you can see the new or the proposed frequencies that for November alongside the existing frequencies that were currently running on those routes. So here's a map with the frequencies color-coded. So 20 minutes or less is the dark green, 21 to 30 is the light green, 31 to 45 is yellow, greater than 45 is orange, that's 45 up to an hour. And then it just continued routes. We would all operate or in dark red. Saturday, we have a similar set of proposed frequency reductions. And as before, 20, 30, 60. So clock headways. So some of these routes are in our Connect 10 network. Others are just other routes, but we're going to, we see, we see we're turning some 50s into 60s and some 25s into 30s. There's even a case where we want to turn 35 into 30. Even though that's more service, the clock headway is what we're trying to get there. And that'll last for more interlining and that'll last for more time transfers when we have clock headwinds. Here's the Saturday frequency map. You see there's more orange there and, and less, less of the dark green and the light green colors. On Sundays, okay, similarly, we are proposing a bunch of routes go to hourly headways. And, and then we have a couple going from 25 to 30, 55 to 60. Once again, going with the clock headways where possible. And there's an instance where this frequency will actually improve to, to come to a clock headway. Sunday frequency map, very similar to Saturday, but more orange. And, and we have, still have some of the dark green and light green colors in there. Okay, suspend operation on specific routes. So this first screen is for routes where we are suspending the, what we call the overnight owl service. And those are the trips that start between 1:00 a.m. and 3:00 a.m. So we are proposing to delete those trips. They are very lightly used on these three routes. And then we also are suspending service completely in our proposal on these other three routes. 11 Claremont, 26 Junction, and 47 Tymon. These three routes together account for only 1% of average daily boardings in our system. And 99.2%, or over 99% of riders on these routes will have access to a different route within walking distance. And by that, we mean about a 10-minute walk or half a mile. Simplify trips on select routes. These are routes that have special patterns or extensions during rush hours on weekdays. So what we would do is just have a regular daytime pattern and run that all day long, including rush hours. So the 38 Plymouth would no longer have service between French and Grantship and Hayes and Eight Mile. All the trips would end at French and Grantship. Only seven people a day use that extension all day long or just during rush hours when it runs. So that's a very small number. And all the boardings will be within a half a mile of a bus stop on another route that will still have service. 43 Schoolcraft, similarly. We're talking about where we have this segment east of Woodward that only operates during rush hours. We would stop running those trips and just run the basic daytime pattern up to Woodward. So that whole red part of the ramp in this map only gets four boarding today over the entire day. And that's very little considering that we run trips on that long extension. And we only get four boards a day. Network impact, very few riders impacted. So how long will these changes be in effect? We're trying to solve our personnel problems by actively recruiting throughout the metro area for both bus operators and bus mechanics. And there's a website over here where you can, if you're interested in working for DDOT, it's a great place. So please take down the website or it will be posted with the presentation tonight. We're posting the whole presentation online. We are planning to start restoring service levels in early 2022 as a first step in a complete reimagining of public transit in Detroit. So that will be what we call a comprehensive operational analysis. We will examine our whole system, where people are using it, where people aren't using it. And we will talk to people about their needs and about what they think could be better. And we will reimagine the system. And that will be for, for next year. Hopefully by the end of next year, we will have a new network with your input. And we will be able to put it in place and, and start service towards the end of next year. So get ready to share your ideas on how to improve public transit in Detroit. We will be starting community conversations in early 2022. So the next steps for these November changes are to submit your public comments by September 15th, 2021. And that is exactly two weeks from today. And you can submit your comments by emailing ddotcomments@detroitmi.gov or calling customer service stating that you are making a public comment. And we were also taking public comments right after this presentation. So the changes will go into effect on November 15th. These, like I mentioned, these are draft service changes. So the final service change package will go into effect on November 15th. Thank you very much. And I will turn the presentation back over to Ayabami. And stop.
Thanks, Steve. Before we call our first person, I'd just like to remind you all that these comments are for public record. And they should be related to today's proposed service changes. Also, please state your first and last name before making your comment. You will have two minutes and I'll let you know once your time is up. You will be prepared to be muted. We will not be responding to any comments during this portion of the meeting. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Kristen to call our first person.
First hand up, excuse me, the first hand up I see is Ms. Fedewa. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yep. Hi, Patty Fedewa, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. First of all, I want to say this hearing does not have proper notice because it does not mention cuts to service. As those affected may not know what, that they would even be affected by what you're proposing. And I've heard that DDOT is going to do all this amazing recruitment of drivers and solve this problem. This wasn't mentioned in your presentation. I don't understand why DDOT is going to be able to recruit now when it couldn't recruit for the last year. This is not right sizing because it's not meeting customer needs and demands. Please don't use that phrase. This is what Mayor Kilpatrick did when he did, when he slashed service in 2006. And service was still not reliable after these service reductions. I don't think we're going to have 100% reliability. This is a matter of Mayor Duggan's administration not prioritizing transit. CADA is paying signing bonuses. Why can't we? DDOT is competing for workers everywhere and should not use competition within the city as an excuse not to pay drivers more because that's what we need to get and keep drivers. Please, please start paying hazard pay so we can actually get some discernible service again. The city should be paying market rate for all jobs or we will lose employees regardless. The city has received millions of dollars from the federal government and it's refusing to use it to support the services we need. And the drivers being represented by a union is no excuse because the union wants to raise wages as well. This is not a lengthy process because both sides want improvement in the wages. And Mr. Oglesby told us a year ago that service would be improving. He didn't say anything about slashing it. Slashing it is not improving it. Please reinstate transit service to pre-COVID levels immediately. These levels are still not sufficient, the minimum.
That is time.
Okay, thank you. The next hand up I see is Cunningham.
Good afternoon and encourage all those that are here to speak. Even if, you know, I was on the
Please state your name for the public record.
Brother Cunningham, Michael Cunningham. So now I'm a taxi driver and I'm all around the city and supplement my income. But getting so many complaints from east to west that it's, the service is very, very lackluster. And I agree with the last caller that signing bonuses, if you can't get higher wages, at least signing bonuses to lure them in, you know, fresh. And DDOT is different where they pay for the training and, you know, they go out of their way a little bit more. Two or $3,000, I'm sure, on billboards, all these empty billboards in the city of Detroit. Somebody with a driver's license, driver license, $3,000, drive the bus. We need your help. I mean, I'm sure that would encourage people to least inquire. When I tell people about it, they have no idea that DDOT is hiring. Why aren't there signs inside of the buses using the audio on the coaches when they get on? A special toll-free number. It doesn't cost too much, but special toll-free number, just letting people know exactly how to do things. Keep it simple, you know. Go to all the transit areas, pass out flyers, let people know a little bit more aggressive in getting bus drivers. Any place to glass bus shelters and more bus drivers, better service. And now they're cutting it. I don't know why I'm still concerned, but I'm concerned because people have to get to work, school, and et cetera. And the bus service is lackluster as it is. It's not your fault, Niawami and, you know, it's the higher-ups, I know. But we have to do better, you know, for our brothers and sisters and, you know.
That is time. That is time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next hand up I see is Stephen Boyle.
Go ahead.
Stephen Boyle. Can you hear me? Okay, I am a resident District 3. I am standing down at the bus, down at the Rosa Parks Transit Center. There's no audible broadcast of this hearing such that the riders that are here who may not have internet access can access this meeting. Could you please talk with your transit police about opening up a broadcast of this through the speakers that they have on their vehicles? That would help the public be able to engage in the meeting and understand the content of the meeting. Two, I'm curious what the function of bus supervisors is. Because if the bus supervisors were doing, doing more than just logging time, but actually arranging time, it might actually help the bus system. As a person that's working oftentimes till 11 or 12 o'clock at night, I'm thankful for the fact that I am on the Woodward bus line as a direct route home. However, I know many people are not. I just was speaking with somebody that is taking the 38 bus. And he told me it runs hourly, but it often doesn't run hourly. And it runs more, runs longer. So we're very concerned about the ability for people to get to work, to get to where their destination is and be able to have 24-hour bus services essential, especially along the routes such as the Dexter that serves three hospitals. We don't deliver workers to their jobs. We're dismissing their presence in our city. And I don't think this mayor that's ran on transit as an issue is doing a very good job. I wish that the city could see the problems that have existed and have gone without being addressed. I'm not sure how much time I've got left.
That is time. That is time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next hand up I see is Anthony Adams.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Anthony Adams, commenting on the service reductions. I find it amazing that service reductions would, would take place at a time when people are struggling with their transit needs. I certainly echo Patty Fedewa's comments as well as those of the other participants. I think we need to be trying to figure out how we better increase mobility options in the city of Detroit. Clearly, if we have low ridership on certain routes, we don't know if that's a direct result of COVID or what that is. But there should be, I would say, mobility transit options that are available so that people don't have to walk as far in order to get to a service line where you're actually reducing service. I think at the end of the day, I think this plan needs to be revisited. There clearly needs to be a commitment to upgrading the quality of service. I find it amazing that knowing that you're going to have bus drivers and mechanics leaving, that you didn't start this process two years ago. Because this is not something that simply came up, but was a problem that we all knew was going to happen. So at the end of the day, I think this plan needs to be revisited. The issue of saying that this will be eliminated next year, I think is a false promise. And people that have been through this process before understand that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next hand up I see is Robert Pavlowski.
Good afternoon, Robert Pavlowski speaking. Can you guys hear me well?
We can. Go ahead.
Perfect. Sorry, I got the fan running. So I agree with the whole thing. I agree with all the participants and what they have to say because this is, this could have been avoided. If we had more job fairs, if we had more public reach out to people that wanted to work for DDOT, that could have been done. And there's still time over the course of the next two months to plan something like this. There was plenty of time over the summer. SMART held a list or just one public reach out for a job fair and it was all drive-through and it was all COVID-friendly. And they've got more drivers coming into them because of the public reach out. Why wasn't this done at the beginning of the year? Why wasn't this done in the middle of the summer? We wouldn't be at this position right now. I know it's not your fault. It's mostly the higher-ups that caused this. I know you're, you have very little say and Mr. Oglesby has very little say when it comes to things like this. But there should have been more reach out. There should have been more stuff done to get more drivers in the door. We wouldn't be at this position right now where we are. But I do agree that this system needs to be revamped a little bit when it comes to the routes and certain things like that. It needs to be revamped. That's the one thing I can agree with you on. But this could have been avoided, honestly. It could have been avoided, you know, completely. Now, I do apologize if I'm coming off a little bit aggressive, but and I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one that's frustrated right now with this. But this is, this is silly, honestly. This, this could have been avoided. That's all I have to say. But I do have one more comment, but I'd like to keep my time respectful of other people. And I'd like to thank the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. The next hand up I see is Stephen Haring.
Hi, my name is Stephen Haring. I'm a resident of downtown Detroit. And the one thing I want to say, and this is pretty much what the previous panelist said is, you guys haven't done any marketing, any job fairs or really put any effort in hiring new drivers. Like, I mean, I'm seeing other cities and even SMART, I mean, they had a prayer fair. I mean, in Miami, they're having commercials to hire new drivers, same transfer city. And you guys have done absolutely nothing. And I mean, you could have done this like a year ago. I mean, what the previous caller said, this could have been prevented. I just want to say shame on, or not you, but shame on the higher-ups for, I mean, not really taking effort in the marketing and whatever.
Okay, thank you. The next hand up I see is Lorraine.
Good afternoon. My name is Rochella Stewart. Would you please let me in? I know I came in the meeting early at 10:00 and I just thought it was at 10:00 instead of 12:00. And you dissed me outside to change my name to get in this time. What I would like to say is you need to do something about raising the pay for drivers. As people are saying, SMART starts off at 17. We're right at 15. I think we could use some of the federal dollars, you know, maybe do it as hazard pay. But you got to do something to bring the drivers in. They're not coming in at $15. If I can go to Amazon to make 15 and I ain't got to be bothered with the people on the bus. You got to give some kind of incentive to get these drivers in that you need. Cutting services, you need to take a little bit more look at some of those lines that you're cutting, you know, services on. I know it's not going to change until November, so you do have some time. I think public engaging needs to be more. You got to put out flyers if you have to do it on the bus, whatever. But you got to get the essential writers in on what's going on with DDOT. They don't know. I thank you. Please think about doing some kind of raising or some kind of hazard pay or a signing bonus to get these drivers in because we need them desperately. People are losing jobs because the buses are not running on time. You know, if you gotta wait an hour and a half, you got to leave three hours before getting to work. Three hours to get back home and then you got an eight-hour shift. God, dog, when do they get some sleep? Thank you, but please think about some of these changes and have a good day.
Okay, thank you. The next hand up I see is Adreeh McCar.
Hi, I'd just like to make a few comments with regards to service changes. First of all, when can we expect service to be fully restored? I don't think it's enough to say that you're going to start restoring service in early 2022. You really need to know what the timeline will be to bring service back to what it should be. And the second is what is the actual recruitment plan for DDOT? I think it's, it's clear that whatever has been done in the past is clearly not working. And this is a problem that existed before the pandemic and has spiraled out of control now. So what is the actual recruitment plan? What are you guys going to be doing differently? And then the third is really, it's very clear that DDOT needs to at least pay its drivers the same wages as SMART drivers in the suburbs, if not more. And I know that the union is asking for hazard pay, which I think, you know, is due given the circumstances. So all things considered, we really need to know what progress is going to be made in the immediate term. And that, you know, DDOT drivers really need to be paid more. This is really a point that I want to hit home. Thank you.
Ayabami, that's all the hands up.
Okay, let's have all our hands raised. Give one more opportunity for anyone who has not. If you've not made your comment for public record, if you haven't been able to do so, please raise your hand before we close this portion.
Okay, Megan, you have not commented yet. Give me one second. Okay.
Hello, I was debating whether to speak or not because you've had a lot of great comments. I would largely echo a lot of the comments that have been made. This is not a shock that it's hard to hire drivers. We've been talking with the city leadership about this or with the agency leadership about this for six to nine months. And for once, money is not the problem. The city The city has gotten over $100 million for public transportation in federal funding. So, for once, this isn't a matter of funding, so doing some of the other things that were mentioned to really boost the hiring, whether it is better promotions, in fact, the Traverse City area transit had TV ads on during the Olympics. Indian Trails is offering $2,000 signing bonuses. Detroiters deserve no less. I just yesterday morning was waiting for 40 minutes for a bus that's scheduled to come every 12 minutes. So, we would very much like to see some substantive improvements and expansions in hiring and pay. I do recognize that, given the current crisis, it is better to be able to provide more reliable service. Certainly, if the seven mile could be running every 20 minutes instead of the 40 I waited, that would be an improvement, but ultimately, this is a very short-term fix to a, to a problem that is not short-term, that really needs to be addressed longer term. I look forward to the opportunities to be involved in discussions of how DDOT will be using the American Rescue Plan funds that the city is receiving, and how that can be used to provide real substantive improvement for riders right away.
That is time.
That's everyone who's had a chance to speak.
Okay, great. With that being said, we'll officially close this portion of our public comment for record, part of the meeting, so it is now closed. That is, our primary purpose of today's meeting was for the public comments. Again, those public comments can continue 15 days later. We have, you have until September 15th. We do have some time remaining, and our service and development scheduling team is standing by to answer some of your comments today. Again, we will not be able to do all, we have about 20 minutes, but they are standing by to address some. Is there any before we ask for any specific questions? Anyone, team would like to respond to anything now that was already asked or commented on?
Yes, we were hoping to get comments on the specific route changes, but you can, you can study them and go through them on your own time and submit comments later on, you know, about the, the new frequencies that are being proposed, the, the routes, the reductions in, in the length of certain routes and in the service hours of other routes, and the suspension of other routes. So, those are the things we need your comments on, please, no, please go back to the proposal when it's posted up and, and let us know.
Okay, so Kristin, go ahead and call our first person again, please, these comments, even with expectation of an answer, we still ask that they are related to the changes for today. Thank you.
Okay, Robert, you first.
Me again. So, the second comment was 1940. It was 40 minutes, it's 40 minutes now, and the proposed change is 60 minutes for weekday, Saturday and Sunday. Hopefully, I looked at that correctly. Why is it 60 minutes? That route has a lot of ridership on weekends and weekdays. A lot of people take that straight, direct shot downtown, and 60 minutes? And even on a weekday? That, that's ridiculous, because I know 125, SMART's route, that runs every hour, and with that times, with that frequency, those time sinks aren't going to sink. I, I bet you complete money on it, it's not going to sink on the weekends. But the weekend, weekdays, I, I don't get it at all. Why? Why does it need to be 60 minutes? Could we, like, put it down to 45? Like, 45 minutes would make a lot, you know, more sense than 60. I mean, come on now, but that, I mean, 1940 really needs a time change, especially with these service changes. But I, I'd just like to end this off, that I know it's not DDOT's fault that you're going through this. I love this system, I like the wonderful work, I love the wonderful people on the staff that have taken all the initiatives to make this system where it is, especially Mr. Oglesby. But this is all the higher-up and what they've done in the process, and I deeply apologize that you have to go through this, but I know DDOT will get back on its feet, and I know the staff will take the steps to get there, and, you know, constantly get the higher-ups to listen to them and stop putting, you know, letting them put their foot down and override y'all on what they have planned, but I know you'll get the steps done, and I wish you the best of luck in the next year to get this back up and running. Thank you again for the time and opportunity to speak, and I hope you have a good rest of the day. Take care now.
Thank you. Cunningham, you can speak again?
Yes, I'm multitasking with the passenger in the back, but, you know, they're, they didn't know about the meeting, and they're shaking their head back here. It just needs to be more engagement. Digital is a digital divide, and folks are not going on Facebook, they're not going on the internet to find information about meetings. We all know it's a digital divide, which means there's a lot of poverty in this city, and hands-on flyers, face-to-face about these meetings. They have the money from the ARP bus from the federal government, and folks, every, like, State Fairgrounds, Rosa Parks Transit Center, St. John, all those areas, flyers should just be everywhere. One side recruiting for drivers, if you got a driver license with a signing bonus, the other side talking about changes. Keep it simple and direct to people's hands, there's a digital divide. Again, I don't get nothing from this, and back in the bus service, it gets worse. I'm sure taxis and Ubers and Lyft will make more money, but I am concerned about my people, my fellow working poor folks. A lot of our disabled like me, trying to make it, trying to survive, trying to supplement their income, and it's not your fault, Mia Mommy and the other gentleman, I know this. I remember when she came on board, she had food, she brought snacks, and she really likes her job. We're not going at you, but we're praying and we're hoping that things can get better, and we're not blaming you, it's the higher-ups. Wow. Why do I care? Because I love my people. That's it, please, fight harder, 10,000 degrees more aggressively to recruit drivers and hands-on with flyers. Use the audio system.
Thank, thank, thank you so much. That is time.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Federer, you can speak again, please? Patty Federer? Okay, next hand up I see is Stephen Boyle.
All right. I'm at the Transit Center, and I'm trying to find people that would be willing to offer a public comment, but I'm not finding anybody willing to step up to the phone and do this well. It's probably because they don't believe that I'm actually offering people an opportunity for a public comment at this time. I will tell you about the situations I've encountered on the seven mile of waiting an hour and a half because the bus didn't show up, and it seems that bus supervisors along the route don't do any assistance in making sure that. I've seen transit police multiple times pass by where I've been waiting. It's good to know that there's some protection for riders that are sitting out, waiting for a bus, but unfortunately, it doesn't address the fact that we are out there in the middle of the night trying to get a bus, and it's just not coming. Or it's just not coming. I, I need you to understand what that feels like. And I don't, I don't think that anybody inside DDOT has actually had that experience, standing there saying, oh, this bus is showing up. It's like, listen, if I told you that I was going to double your salary, and then I didn't deliver it, how are you going to feel about that? Like, I'm going to deliver, I'm going to double your salary on this date, and I'm going to tell you, it's going to happen. And you're sitting there, and you're waiting for it, you're waiting for it, and it never shows up. How does it feel? I need some people to actually have feelings and thought that follows the feelings involved in the process. I don't think that Mayor Dugan, with his lack of engagement with the public around this city, is the mayor that we need to be looking at. He's not involved. He continues to use his district managers as if they're the people that are doing things around here. Listen, if they are the ones doing things, maybe they need to be our mayor.
Thank you, that is time, that is time.
Yeah. I just wanted to say that I ride the number seven every day, and, and I've experienced the 40 minutes waiting time, and one reason for that, of course, is the missing trips, and that's what we're trying to address here. And when a trip is missing, that also makes the lead bus, following the gap in service, it makes that much slower because it has to pick up two or three buses' worth of people. And, and then sometimes the bus behind that catches up if it falls 15 minutes behind schedule, so then you end up with bus bunching. So, we are trying to address that by having a schedule that we can actually deliver, and, and that's the, the whole reason behind our changes. And yes, I do suffer with you, because I'm out there waiting for the bus.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine, which I believe is Ms. Stewart.
Yes, good afternoon again. I just still want to address getting information out about these meetings. Me and my bus crew from DPP, we're out all the time. This weekend, I was out at Fairland, I was out on Greenfield, I was out on Grand River. We go to the Transit Center, Rosa Parks and State Fair, Jefferson and Woodward, and I'm passing out flyers to let them know about your meeting. A lot of people don't know. I told them if they couldn't make this meeting, at least go in and put the comments in before the 15th, so that they have what's necessary from your comments. But please, please, make it more accessible for people to know where these meetings are. Run them down there on the digital down at Rosa Parks. Somehow or another, maybe have somebody, some of your representatives go out and pass out flyers at some of these stops, so that people know they can engage with DDOT about these changes, about anything that's going on with DDOT. Praise them for what they do, and if there's something they're not doing, let them know. There's so many people out here that needs this transportation. Please make it available so that they know when these meetings are possible. Thank you. Everybody have a good day. You know I love you, girl. Just keep up the good work, and everybody have a blessed day.
Thank you. I see, I'm not sure what this is, CL 34567, I'm not sure if that's a phone, but you can speak? You're unmuted, but I don't think we can hear you. Okay. We're having an issue there. Ms. Federer, did you want to speak again?
Yes, that would be great. Sorry about that earlier. I just, I just, if I could, I'm going to ask three questions, and if I could get some, I guess, better answers, that would be great. Why not use the federal money for this problem and pay people more and get our service back running the way it should? Secondly, what date in particular, if you're saying this is temporary, are you looking at restoring service? I didn't hear anything solid as to a specific date. I just heard sort of towards the end of 2022, which does not sound very temporary. And third, how are you going to handle the overcrowding that's likely to ensue from the schedule?
Okay, from what we understand, the overcrowding is due mostly to missing buses that are scheduled but aren't out on the street. And we have studied, the low ridership is about half or less than half of what it was before the pandemic, so we believe that this, being able to deliver the service consistently at predicted times will not result in overcrowding. The overcrowding we have now is because of the long gaps in service when the buses, when the trips are not being operated. So, and as far as the infrastructure money, we have proposals to spend that infrastructure money, but it has to be spent to build things, not to give money out to people to drive the bus. That is the essence of infrastructure. That's really all I have right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. Megan Owens, if you'd like to speak again?
Thank you very much. I'd like to speak on two things. One, I'd like to respectfully disagree with Mr. Turnick that the American Rescue Plan and previous federal funds are explicitly focused on maintaining, providing and maintaining bus service. They actually have to be used for service if there have been any sort of cuts or layoffs, I guess. So, again, I very much look forward to having some conversations about how those are used and can be used. I'm glad that there are proposals. Please let us in the public know when we can be a part of discussions about how to best use that really once in a generation in federal investment that we're receiving. Second, the, I'd love to hear more about how the city handles bus bunching. While I was waiting yesterday morning, I saw three westbound buses come by within about 10 minutes of each other, and then none for another 30 minutes. I know bus bunching is an issue everywhere, it's a very ever-changing thing, but do you have a specific strategy? Are your supervisors trained in ways to help alleviate that bunching? So again, you can minimize the, the big gaps between buses and then, like, three in a row. So, those are the two things I'd like to comment on or hear more about. Thank you.
Audrey, could we get you to address the bunching question?
Sure. So, basically, our road supervisors are trained in all service restoration procedures. We also utilize our control center, which, take a look at the entire system on, on electronic basis. A lot of the bus bunching are typically symptoms of issues going on out there on the road. It could have been a train delay or whatever other issue that caused the initial service interruption, could be overcrowding. But our service inspectors are trained to make service restoration. Typically, the procedure is one of three options. They either turn the bus, they either advance the time on that, for that operator to go ahead of the schedule, or they deadhead him. So, sometime bus bunching occurs based on either ADA pickup, there's a lot of factors, but yeah, we are definitely trained between our control center and our road supervision, we're closely monitoring. We're closely monitoring to, to make sure that we reduce the, the negative impact our riders actually experience. But, um, it, it, we are, we, we, we are definitely, uh, working closely with our scheduling department to try to reduce that even more. Um, the overcrowding is one that is typically the main crust of why we experience, um, bus bunching currently under this current, um, pandemic era. But, um, there are other mitigative circumstances. But to answer your question, yes, our service inspectors and control center are closely monitoring to try to reduce the negative impact.
Great. Uh, yeah, I definitely think that there's a that that's especially important now as you're seeing these, these missed routes and gaps. I certainly hope none of the drivers are waiting for their scheduled time if a bus route has been missed prior to them. So, um, yeah, thank you. And please continue to work with your road supervisors to be very proactive in addressing that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's try the CL 34567 again. Can unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, my name is Alicia H. and I do live here in Detroit, a lifelong Detroit-er. Um, I continue to hear about a shortage of drivers and my thought is, um, can you possibly look into what University of Michigan has done up there? They've started the autonomous self-driving buses. I mean, it's just at least something to look into. Because you're going to be cutting service in November. That's when the snow comes and, uh, the temperature drops. And it's just really a bad time to reduce the service time. I wish really could wait maybe until next spring or summer because it gets really cold here in Detroit, Michigan in November, December. So I would say, um, look into the autonomous self-driving buses because you think about it, who drives the people mover? Who is the driver of the people mover? That's my comment. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
I will respond that, uh, this technology is still in development and it's being experimented on, especially in places where there's no city traffic. And, uh, and it is definitely, we are open to all kinds of technology for the future. Uh, but this isn't something that's ready to go right now. The complications of being a bus operator are so much more than just driving the bus. There's so many other things that, uh, and, uh, and there, there's so many distractions out there besides, uh, just, uh, moving the bus. So, uh, we, uh, we are open to all kinds of new technology that are ready to go right now and that right now that one is not ready to go. It's be, a lot of the experiments with driverless vehicles are in fixed guideways like the people mover that you mentioned. And also like the, uh, yeah, roadways that where there's not a lot of mixed traffic. Uh, there are so many complications driving in city traffic, uh, that, uh, and also regarding an earlier question about restoring service, we said we would begin to restore service late, early next year. And hopefully late next year, we'll be up to the current service levels. Once we have the reimagined network in place, the, the, the levels should be similar to what we have now. Uh, but not exactly the same system because it'll be a reimagined system.
Thanks, Steve. With it being one o'clock before officially, and was there any other closing remarks you had? From you or your team before we close out?
Anyone on this planning and scheduling team have any responses to these questions that we've been hearing? Anyone would like to add anything? Uh, what about, uh, TMD? Do we have any input from TMD? Russ or James or Melissa?
Steve?
Yeah.
Thanks. Um, appreciate everyone's comments. They're heartfelt and I don't think you'd get a single person disagreeing on the team about any of this. The goal is to be able to deliver service reliably to you. Currently, we're delivering the same amount of service every day. It's just haphazard. And we want to deliver it reliably to kind of build a strong base to grow from next year.
Okay, so the Russ and the other TMD consultants are the people who will be helping us with the comprehensive operational analysis and the reimagined network. And they'll also be helping with the public participation aspects of that. So you'll probably be hearing from them again. But as he mentioned, we still plan to get out all the service we can possibly get out. So we're not really cutting service. It's just that we're trying to deliver it in a predictable way. We want all of the operators, all of the buses that we can possibly get out on the street. But we want them to show up at regular intervals in a predictable way.
Thank you, Steve. And thank you for clarifying for everyone knows who TMD is as well. So at this time, we will officially close our meeting. I do want everyone to know there is a second public hearing taking place tonight at 5:30. Those notices went out. It is a different link. If you plan on attending again, please be mindful that there is a different link for the meeting tonight at five. Again, um, comments don't end today. You have until September 15th. And for anyone not able to attend today's, any of today's hearings, our presentation will be online, uh, following, uh, tonight's hearing. So people will also have the opportunity to view the presentation as well and still submit their comments. So again, thank you all for joining us. Please stay safe and we'll see probably many of you tonight at 5:30.